Welcome back in. You are joining our community forum at Bethel Missionary Baptist Church. Welcome in, and it is live streaming. Thanks to Mr. Tate and this wonderful organization, and to the pastor of record. We definitely really appreciate being here today as we continue, Pastor McGee, as we continue McCree, not McGee, McCree, Pastor McGree, going into our next phase. I want to thank the candidate of record, Mr. Franklin, who was here. Mr. Hilliard had gotten a call. He didn't, he was not aware, so he rushed over here, so we waited for him. Thanks to his opponent. These two have been gracious men, and we're going to continue on. Every candidate has been invited. Your, the young lady that was here, Ms. Collins, she could not make it. She had a prior engagement, and she has made other forums. I do want you all to know that there's another opponent in here. Your current serving city councillor was invited, Ms. Latonya Tate, and she did not have any, we did not hear back from her, am I correct? The folks who have organized this did not hear back from her, and she's your current city council member. So, the two opponents of record, Mr. John Hilliard and Mr. Franklin, welcome, 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 welcome to today's forum. We're going to continue on. Mr. Hilliard, we're going to ask you to give your opening statement. Mr. Franklin, we're going to ask you to do yours again. Mr. Hilliard, you may go first.
Good evening.
Thirty seconds.
Well, good morning. It's exciting to be here and to be back in a place of God where I've shared a lot with this church in my former position as on the city council. We worked a lot together on community issues and I think cleanup programs in the area. So, I'm excited. I'm looking forward to going back to the Birmingham City Council so we can continue the work that we've done in business, economic development, public safety, and all of the great things that we accomplished while we were in the city council. So, John Hilliard is my name. I'm excited.
Mr. Franklin?
My name is Richard Franklin. Once again, I'm running for Birmingham City Council, District 9. District 9 is comprised of nineteen neighborhoods, six schools, eighteen parks. We're the area in Birmingham where we're really the distressed area that everybody talks about. So, today, I want to go through my platform, talk about my plans, but more than anything, let's get down to business and solving problems. So, I'm excited to be here. I thank this organization, and I thank this pastor. And before I put the mic down, I want to just take a moment to silence Bishop Kevin Woods that he passed.
Thank you. Here's your first question. Mr. Franklin, you've answered this, so I'm going to start with Mr. Hilliard, and then I'm going to re-ask it so you could have equal time. Is that okay? Okay. And then we'll be back on track with equal time. As one of the members of the city council, Mr. Hilliard, each with equal power, what approach would you use to make decisions?
Well, first of all-
Two minutes, and you do get two minutes per question.
Repeat that again. I'm trying to-
As one of the members of the Birmingham City Council, each of you with equal power, what approach would you use to make decisions?
Well, because of the Birmingham, because of Mayor Council Act, the council's power lies in five votes. You, first of all, you have to know how to build relationships and communicate with your other colleagues to get something really done. The council is a very powerful industry when it works together to protect the citizens of the city of Birmingham. So, I would use my skill set on building relationship and understanding what each one of my colleagues, what their needs are in their community. Fortunately, our needs are really basically the same. So, you know, the same thing that needs to be happening in District 9 is something that needs to happen across the city of Birmingham. So, I would use my skill set and relationships to work with my colleagues to take care of the business of the city of Birmingham and affect our budget as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Franklin, knowing that you all have equal power, what approach would you use to make decisions at Birmingham City Council if elected?
First, it starts with the neighborhood and communities. I will, anything I ever vote on, it will always go back to what the neighborhood or communities want. We've seen that be an issue throughout the city and throughout District 9. But also, more than anything, my colleagues on the council, we must stick together. I hear a lot these days about counting to five, but over the last eight years, I've only seen the city council vote against the mayor two times. They vote unanimously for the budget over the last eight years unanimously for the budget. So, I want to get into a talk about if we're going to really do something, talk about what's in the budget. The meat of the council and the power of the council starts with that budget. And if you, we don't, we don't start voting the budget down, then we're going to have issues. And I used to work for the city so people will know it won't stop city businesses. It will revert the budget back to the previous year budget, so things will continue to run. So, let's get into a deeper conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Franklin, what is the biggest challenge currently facing the city of Birmingham, in your opinion? What is the biggest challenge currently facing the city of Birmingham, in your opinion?
Crime. Crime is the number one issue. Even though crime is down, violent crime is up. And I think many of the things that we talk about that affect many of our communities is the disinvestment. Things that we used to have in the city that we invested in, we don't invest in anymore. And I often tell people, we must go back to the meat of a community. We must invest in parks. We must invest in our park and rec centers. We must invest in our libraries. We must invest in our schools. If you look at the city budget, the budget is a $591 million budget, and it's been growing the last four years, breaking the record. But you see little investment going on into the neighborhoods. And the last piece that I want to say is that even if you look at trash, we all talk about the city being nasty. We used to go from have two days of service, now we have one day of service. So, therein lies the problem. It was voted on, and it wasn't discussed. So, the biggest thing, I would say crime, but all of those things in my mind goes all together. But crime is number one because right now, there's a perception, even though here we say it's down, but nationally, when you look at when we finish where our numbers are, Birmingham will probably be number five in the country with homicides. So, crime is really not down. It's just down from last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hilliard, what is the biggest challenge you think the city of Birmingham currently faces, in your opinion?
Well, first of all, let me say this. Crime is definitely, public safety is a huge issue in our community. I will address that by going back to community involvement. We need more community involvement from our churches, from our community leaders involved in our, in our crime in our city. I think that Committee to serve Jefferson County said something very well, that they went to the school board, and they implemented a program that will help guide young children into our police force, because we're, we're short on our police officers. So, that's something we really need to look at. And I, I will say this, I won't do what our present council person has done. She took almost a half a million dollars. She sent it to Philadelphia, and I don't hear much talk about this. She sent that money to Philadelphia to get somebody from Philly to come to District 9 of Birmingham and talk to us about crime. And ain't nobody has said a word about who is that man, what his organization is, and why would we pay him a half a million to talk about crime and show us in Birmingham how to save crime? I'm mad about it. I want to know more about it, and you should be asking questions. Where is your money? Why did they send that money to Philly to do something about crime in Birmingham? That's why she ain't here, because she don't want to face some questions, and she don't want to face some answers. But I will specifically make sure that your money is spent well in District 9 and the city of Birmingham to do something about crime, and I'm mad at everything about it.
Okay. Mr. Hilliard, what is the biggest challenge currently facing District 9, which you're trying to be elected to represent?
Wow. You know, we have issues in District 9 really affects the same issues across the board in the city of Birmingham. We, you know, I want to, first of all, say, we got to, we got to conquer blight. Blight is a big issue in our community. How would John Hilliard conquer blight? I will work with my other colleagues to, to, to pull together what I call a blight bun, a bun that we would float to gather up tons of money to come in and clean up these abandoned lots, these abandoned houses. I've researched it. I brought in some, some investment bankers. I brought in some people from New York and Atlanta. We drove District 9 street by street, and we realized we need to clean up these lots and these properties so that we could bring new developers in. Some of our small business developers, some of our investors that flip homes and know how to do it. They want clean properties and a clean slate. District 9 can be as awesome as any of the other communities around Birmingham. So, that's one of the things we would, number one, do. Now, let me tell you what I have done to help District 9. I want you to think about this. I've worked on homes and houses in the, in the, as a matter of fact, in my opponent's community. We built homes in that community. I cut ribbons for new homes across Birmingham, down in the Jackson Hole and area. We have done that. Not only that, let me tell you this. A lot of people try, try to take credit. They all rushed down to Bermanport.
Thirty seconds.
They rushed down to Bermanport to get attention, but Bermanport is a water port that borders District 9. I put the seed money down at Bermanport to raise eight million dollars, where we have just built a structure down there that would house and generate economic development and create jobs.
Fifteen seconds.
I want to say to you, I'm working hard in District 9, and I know what to do from day one. Thank you.
Mr. Franklin, what is the biggest challenge currently facing your district that you're trying to represent, District 9?
Let me stand up when I say this. We're lacking unity and leadership. It goes hand in hand. We have not been brought together. We have four state representatives that represent this area. We have two county commissioners that touch our district, and we also have two state senators. You may say, "Mr. Franklin, why are you bringing it up?" Because with those titles, it brings money. But what we have going on has been going on for a long time. We don't work together. We don't leverage that money. So, there's a lot of the issues that we have. If you go into the Dolomite area on Ten Mill Road, Commissioner Scales is the representative, the county commissioner. She actually put money to fix that road, but we, as a council, we have to give permission. So, one of the things most people don't know that, we're not leveraging in all our positions that we have. So, many of the issues that we talk about from the roads, when we talk about with the blight, we don't have a plan. So, that's the other piece why I said we all have to come together. It may sound simple what I'm saying, but think about it. You've never seen it. You see pockets of it of who like each other. You also hear when it's done, you never see these things. You're going to see me as the council person, everything that I'm saying, because I already have the ability to bring everybody together, and you're going to see it. This is going to be a new District 9. It's going to be a model, not just for District 9, but for the city of Birmingham. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Neighborhood investments, neighborhood revitalization. Concerns have been raised about the unmet neighborhood needs and disparities in city services. Some candidates have criticized funding cuts to neighborhood associations. What is your plan to reengage not only neighborhood associations, community leaders, clergy, and others around you to help you lead? Mr. Franklin, I'll let you go first, and then Mr. Hilliard.
Well, first, remember I talked about that budget? Now, I'm going to talk about the elephant in the room. That $2 million the council, the last eight years, has approved it. So, what I would do is not approve it. There are things that are in the budget that we're sitting here talking about, not just in District 9. A lot of rhetoric is going on, but you have to have the courage to vote no. And when you just vote no, you're not just voting no, you're letting other councillors know, let's stand up. Let's stand up for the people that elected us. At one time, the neighborhoods used to get five to 10 million dollars. You say, "How will I engage them?" I will have monthly, no, every two months, I will have meetings in District 9 where you will be able to talk. People say, "Richard, why are you saying it?" Because if you've been to a District 9 town hall meeting, it's wrote on a piece of paper. No, we're going to talk with each other, and we're going to have solutions. And what I'm going to do is have the staff there, and I'm going to take it back to the mayor. The example that I give people is when you bring issues to me, every Tuesday, I will notify the mayor and his staff of what's going on. And then, when it comes to the neighborhoods, I will not vote on any project that you have not been told about, and I will not vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hilliard?
Well, first of all, let me say this. You know, the city council is a body that really is independent of what we have going on in the city. If the council was to work together, you would be more powerful than you could ever imagine. Unfortunately, because of the Mayor Council Act, the power has been shifted towards the mayor's office. Now, the mayor doesn't have a vote on the Birmingham City Council. And that's very interesting to me, because you have no vote on the Birmingham City Council, but all the money that's raised comes to the mayor's office, so that then the mayor can pick who he wants for the Birmingham City Council. Those are things we've got to change. We've got to change. And let me tell you where that starts at. That starts right here in your neighborhood, right here in your community. Neighborhood offices are very important, and they are more powerful than people realize they are. But we can't accept it. We can't allow government, which is your city council, your, well, I'm going to say city hall, to have these CROs that comes in, and now they're taking over and telling the people what they can and cannot do. I have a problem with that. When you have power, you have to learn to use it. And what I would say to our neighborhood offices and our committees, you have a lot of power, and you could use your power to really exercise it, to make a huge difference. And they say, "Right." Now, when I served on the council, I fought like everything to make sure you had the money you needed to go on your conventions and seminars, to make sure it was there.
Thirty seconds.
And the city, the mayor's office fought against that, didn't want you to have it. All I want our community leaders to remember, who fought for you when you really needed it, and to make it happen? John Hilliard is that candidate. I fought for you, and I'll fight again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. As a sitting city council member with this Mayor Council Act, as so many of you have illustrated, that it is hampering, it's hamstringing you to, when a constituent calls you and says, "I need help in my community," and the answer is, "Well, I can't do nothing because of the Mayor Council Act, because it's the mayor, department heads." But what would you do to avoid that? Because what the, what appears to be happening is that when people get elected, they have amnesia. And when they get elected, and right before an election, all of a sudden, stuff is getting done. What would you do to make sure that your, your commitment to the community is a continuous thing? And what would you do to make sure that that Mayor Council Act does not hamper you from working with others or doing things that you might have to go outside to do, maybe on your own? Mr. Hilliard?
Wow. I often tell people, there is power in the position. Now, don't get me wrong. I tell people a lot of times, titles are one thing, but just by having titles and experience and knowledge, if you know how to use it, you could do a lot with it. So, John, what do you mean by that? Well, let me tell you. As my title is a Birmingham City Council, I use my knowledge from my past lives in the legislature, from my past lives as a voting poll chief right here in this community. I use that in my relationships to make a difference. So, what we did, the mayor came to me, he says, "Hey, I found $58 million in the budget. I can remember like it was yesterday." I said, "You did?" He says, "Yes," and he slid it over. He said, "This is what I'm going to do with it." I said, "Mayor, that's very interesting. I wish you well." He said, "You going to vote for it?" I said, "No." He said, "Well, why not?" I said, "Mayor, you didn't ask me what District 9 wanted. What's in it for us? Tell me how this affects us, and what made you come to a conclusion without asking me first? The citizen of District 9 wants to know what is going to happen for us." So, he said, he said, "Well, what do you want?" I said, "I'll tell you what I want. I want that One Pratt Park finished. I need the money for One Pratt Park to make it complete. So, every time each and every one of you walk through that One Pratt Park, remember that was because I knew what to do, and I knew how to handle it. And we got the money for One Pratt Park-
Thirty seconds.
And we cut the ribbon for One Pratt Park. I did that. Thank you.
Mr. Franklin?
I don't want any more power. I want to follow the rules we have, because my background is dealing with the Birmingham Board of Education. Many of you know me in that role as a union president. I've never been a board member, superintendent. But guess what? As a council person, I understand the power of negotiating. You have to negotiate from the beginning. You have to go in knowing what you want. The power of voting no. I want everybody to realize, yes, the power was taken from the council. But if the council is currently always, the last eight years, voting everything except three items down, you're giving your power away. You can't negotiate anything, even in the budget. When we talk about One Pratt Park, Railroad Park is in the budget. Every other park that, that's not in our areas in the budget. Go look at the park and look at the upkeep. It's the council's job to advocate, legislate, and pass a balanced budget. It is not the council's job to run the day-to-day operations. The council's job is to advocate. So, the issue that even you gave, former Commissioner Smoot, what Richard would do is I would advocate to the mayor's office of what my neighborhoods already want when issues arise. I know I cannot direct department heads, but I have the ability to email and let them know what's going on, and also let the mayor's office know what's going on, and hold the mayor accountable when there is no response.
Thirty seconds.
And the biggest thing is that when issues arise and the mayor won't answer, the council still has the ability to add neighbors and community to the agenda and let them address the mayor.
And your next question. It appears that council members are currently very, very silent. It also appears that the council members have not been very vocal in regard to the Water Works Board, in regards to some major things that have happened. And would you be a rubber stamp vote, or are you comfortable being independent and standing alone with your community? Mr. Franklin?
Those of you that know me, is I've always stood alone, and that's what makes you a leader. I have not been elected to the Birmingham City Council, but I'm the only candidate that is sitting here that took the time to spend my money to go down about the water works. So, I would never be a rubber stamp. I will always vote with the people's interests. I know that I have to negotiate things, but guess what? When I'm negotiating, I will always communicate with you to know what I'm negotiating on. So, they're silent because they've been compromised. And before I go to my seat, go look at everybody's campaign finance. You'll understand why people are silent. Look at my campaign finances. I'm funding my own campaign. I've been going door to door. I was very light-skinned before I started. I'm turning darker. But at the end of the day, I'm here to represent District 9. I'm not playing, and I'm not against anybody. It's about you, the people, and you have a decision to make on August 26th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hilliard?
Wow. You said a lot when you talked about that water system. It strikes a nerve with me. It really, really bothers me. I, I'm going to say that, you know, out front. I served in the legislature for ten years. Every year that I served in that legislature, it was their talk about taking the water system from Birmingham. They want the water system. They want the airport. They want the police department, and they want your fire department. They want to turn it all to regional government. And let me say this to you. We have to be vigilant from the beginning. People often ask me the question, whose fault is it that we lost our water system? Well, first of all, let me say this. When I served in the legislature, Dick Arrington, the mayor of the city of Birmingham, he was vigilant. He had somebody on top of that stuff, from the governor's office to the city council's office. It was across the board. And let me tell you this. I got a problem with that, because I realized that our house was left unattended. And that's why we lost our water system. And I'm going to tell you something. You can get NIFIs on that city council if you want to. You see what we got with the current one we had? Nothing. Now, here we stand, now talking about, you need somebody with experience and who know what to do. I tell you this. We didn't, you didn't lose the water system up under John Hilliard's administration when I served in the city, on the state legislature. And you won't lose anything else-
Thirty seconds.
-if you get somebody who knows how to govern and make something happen. I can make that happen. I have the intel. I have the knowledge. I have the experience to help you maintain a way from regional government. Thank you.
Last question before we take a question from the audience. In, in the current administration and your current representation, why are you running? What is wrong? Why are you running? What is wrong with the current leadership at this point in time that has possessed you to run against a sitting incumbent? Mr. Franklin?
First of all, I'm a person that believes when you're a leader, you get ahead of issues. The issue that I see is that we're reactionary. When crime was bad, we were reacting. It was our fault. That's what was told to us. When the roads are messed up, they say it's our fault. So, I put myself up. But first, I was asked by the people, the neighborhood officers. I'm from the Smithfield community. They asked me to run. Then, some kids asked me to run. Then, my neighbors asked me to run. So, the people have faith in me. It starts with the people. So, I'm running because, hey, we got to do something, not just different, but we on life support District 9. We have nineteen neighborhoods, and the median income in District 9, when you average all the neighborhoods up, is $23,000 a year. We have no grocery, no, we have one grocery, no, two grocery stores, but where they sit, majority of our district is in, is in the food desert. Nobody wants to talk about it. We've been disinvesting. We, but we've been voting on everything outside our district. And before I go to my seat, they played a trick on us. They built a stadium, and they built an amphitheater in another district, then turned around and said it was in District 9. We're not gaining anything by these amenities being in our district, because none of the money goes back to our district. So, guess what? If it was 1%, where would we be? So, when you say, "Why am I running?", it's time for change. It's time to do something different. If you believe that everything's okay, keep what you have now, or go back to what you had before. But I'm telling you, if you want something different that's going to make a change and hold me accountable, it'll be Richard Franklin on August 26th.
Thank you so much. Mr. Hilliard?
Wow. I want to thank, uh, uh, Mr. Franklin for bringing up and talking about the amphitheater and talking about that improvement in that system down, which is now in District 9. And I'll be very honest with you. I'm excited to have the amphitheater and all of that in District 9. And let me tell you why. I personally chaired economic development. I worked hard on getting the amphitheater into the Birmingham area. I went to Live Nations. I went to Atlanta. I went to Nashville, and I worked with them to bring the amphitheater here. Why? Because it provide jobs. We have people from District 9 that work at the amphitheater, even though the tax bases off of it goes to that county system. But if you realize, the Birmingham hotels are reaping a lot of money. I'm excited to say to you that we need to be bringing more jobs into Birmingham. Let me say this. I'm not a rubber stamp. Matter of fact, I'm too old to be a rubber stamp for anybody. And I will say to you that I will work extremely hard like I've been doing, like I worked on, on, on Bermanport and bringing that port here. I was so excited to see us receive that eight million dollars. And I'm going to tell you something. That came with negotiations with the senators, our state reps, and our state legislators. We couldn't receive that grant money without having their support. So, I believe in networking and working with others. What you'll have in John Hilliard, you won't have a rubber stamp. You have proven leadership, and you'll have someone who believe in it. And I wrap up by saying this. I preached aviation in our last time. And at Carver High School, at Wilkinson Elementary School, I gathered the kids up, got them involved in education and aviation, and, and started to push, and I will continue to push for my aviation clubs. And last but not least, let me say this. Together, together, we'll make a difference.
Five seconds.
Proven leadership in John Hilliard. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will entertain questions from the audience. Are there any questions from the audience? District 9, Birmingham City Council. Any questions from the audience?
Good morning. My name is Vincent Long. I live in District 9. Two questions, please. There is, on the Forest Hill Boulevard, a MAX sign that says that facility is going to be used, I assume, for the MAX buses or transit as a facility. I'd like for you to touch on that in District 9. And the other thing is, I am the youth deacon at Bethel Church. I've worked with kids. Some of them are now 34, 35 years old. I coached basketball for 17 years. You know, during the You know, during the tornado, we lost our family life center. I go every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday with one of our elder deacons, uh, who suffered major surgery on his spinal cord, to the Bessemer Sports Complex. They have swimming pools, indoor facilities, exercises, and things of that nature. There is no place in District Nine in the western section that facilitates our children, our senior citizens, to have that type of facility. Would you be able to bring something like that to the western area? Right now, we have Housie, Sanford, and Mackalpine. Uh, the pools are closed in East Thomas. And would you address that for the family life, for the seniors, for the children, and those of us that need a facility like that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
I guess I'll start my, I don't think I said, I used to be the city of Birmingham swim team coach, and I also work with park and rec. So when you hear me talking about the budget, what's changed is in the city budget. We're not investing in park and recs. We're not investing in our rec centers. I didn't get a chance to say, but I'm glad you asked that question. There is a plan on the books to get rid of Mackalpine and Enslie Rec, which I'm totally against. The plan is Mackalpine will become a senior citizen facility, and Enslie Rec will be some kids' center. Uh, they have a family fund center they're talking about at the Crossplex. The, the reason I'm against it, when I was city of Birmingham swim team coach, and one of the things you just said, a lot of our kids, and they, they don't come from good family background. So most of the things we're talking about is spending money. So under, under my administration, we will invest back in rec centers. I've already talked with a lot of people that's running for council, and that is one of the big things we're gonna advocate for. And even when it comes to our senior citizens, it is a travesty that we have rec centers, but our senior citizens are having to go to libraries and go to One Pratt Park to have a service that used to be provided for through the city of Birmingham when the budget given to park and recs. Even though they're separate entities, don't let anybody fool you, the city of Birmingham puts money into park and recs, because that's a game that's always been played, that it's the recs' fault and this and that. If, if we put the money there, we have to do it. And when it comes to, uh, MAX transit, we have to also leverage more money to have true MAX transit in the city of Birmingham, and I wish I had more time to talk about that.
All right. Mr. Hilliard?
Wow, thank you. Your first question was about the MAX transit. And, and let me tell you this. I pointed Pastor Darryl Cunningham of the New Birth Baptist Church to the Transit Authority. In doing that, they went to research and find out, how could they bring and expand MAX? That's an example of it. So when you see that project going up, that's happening in District Nine, that's economic development in our community. More people will get jobs working out in that area. Those are the, that's the type of foresight that I was fortunate to be able to work along with and have. So I wanna say kudos to Pastor Cunningham for having that vision. Now, let me talk to you about this. A lot of you don't know this, but you see those little transit bus that say Birmingham On Demand? Those little Mercedes Benz buses, they move you around? How, how many of you seen that move around Birmingham? You've seen that. You can ride it for a dollar fifty. That's a John Hilliard project. I went to DC, and I sought out, how could we improve transportation in Birmingham? And I thought to myself, I said, wow, how can we can't have an on-demand system for Birmingham transit? Because I've listened to the people that ride the, uh, the buses, and I used to ride the buses, and people say, they never arrive on time, you don't know when they coming, they don't come to your house to pick you up, they come to your block. But guess what? Transportation on demand will come to blocks if you're in a radius to pick them up. That's something that I brought to Birmingham to help move around. You know, so every time you see one of those transit buses, or those little mini buses, think about Hilliard, because we helped pull that in the area. Those are the type of experience don't come from, out of just being on those city council. It comes out of knowing how to connect with people. You've invested in me, and it's now my turn to give it back to you. Thank you so much, John Hilliard.
Thank you so much. I need a mic change. Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Thank you, Mr. Tate. I appreciate you, Mark, of a good audio engineer. I got two mics now, I got a third one over here. I do know how to use microphones, that's my world, and I, I quite enjoy it. Thank you, very grateful for being here. Thank you both. At this time, we're going to ask you to take, um, thirty seconds to tell us why, uh, you, uh, deserve to represent these great people, this great audience streaming. Uh, and this is, um, uh, critical as you wrap up. I know you're tired, so. You do have a question? You gotta make it brief for me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna accept that. They told me to wrap it up, we gotta get to the mayor's forum. Please be brief.
I'd like to know from both candidates, what are, what are you all going to do about all these overgrown lots, all these abandoned houses in Birmingham? It's been like that for years. This had, this had, has not just started.
So you're sitting in a place right here, what, which was the grounds of Bethel Missionary Baptist Church. I like to say missionary, because you're sitting on the grounds that was wiped out by a tornado. Wiped clean. Just wiped out. And there was a promise in this community, I covered that story. Uh, there was a promise that FEMA funds were coming, that there was gonna be rebuilding. There was a plan. In fact, there was a plan to rebuild out here. The guy that's building, uh, in Hoover, in Trussville, his, his signature homes, had brought a plan, uh, not under the current administration, but the administration before, that looked like, um, if you are familiar with Robert Trent Jones golf courses, it looked like Ross Bridge. I was there. I was in the room when they had that meeting, I was serving in my capacity. And had it laid out, this gentleman is the largest home builder in America. One of the top five. He went to Huffman High School, he graduated from UAB. And they kinda patted him on the head. And the plan was to build in Pratt City around, uh, that was wiped out. And the plan, and it's, it's in the record, was to also have it built with the library, the fire. It was beautiful. I saw the plan. I saw it myself. Stunned me. So to your question, you are absolutely right. Never got done. Don't know how it stalled out. And don't know where, um, the funds went. They did something with the funds. I know that FEMA had originally had four million in funds, that's where it started, don't know where it is. That was another administration. So to answer your question, uh, Mr. Franklin, I'll start with you. What is the plan? One minute. And then, uh, Mr. Hilliard, what is the plan? And certainly, you can talk to these gentlemen after this forum.
So you have to have a plan. We've been tearing down houses, not building back then. We turn around and say, we don't have money, because we wasting money. But guess what? All those private-public partnerships, Daniel Payne College, there was a plan, and that needs, this plan needs to be restored, where you would bring housing to this area. We need to do a public-private partnership. And I'd be very excited, and I'm, and that's something I'm already working on, because it's people that look like us. And when it comes to dealing with us, we act like we can't do private-public partnerships. But more than anything, you all, we need to have a plan.
Thirty seconds.
It's very simple. You see every year the council vote on the budget to tear down houses, but we don't have a plan to build back. Under my administration, there will be a plan to build back, and it will be broken down by each area.
And Mr. Hilliard?
Well, you know, I've, I've said this several times, but I'm glad you asked the question, so I can say it again. I brought in some investment bankers from New York and from Atlanta. We rode Birmingham, and we rode District Nine district specifically, looking, because I needed ideas, and I wanted to reach out to someone else who could help me thinking. They thought about it, and they said, John, in Detroit, y'all remember Detroit was just like ripped up? Economic development, everything had failed, in some parts of Atlanta. So we, we looked around, and we saw that you could create blight buns. A blight bun is a bun that will be floated on the value of our revenue in our cities. We can float a blight bun and raise millions of dollars that could go in and clean us up, and we can look like this St. John Hoover in Homewood. I'm gonna fight to clean up District Nine, but all the city of Birmingham, with our, whoever our current, our mayor is, or our, our council people, we're gonna pass that. And I'm gonna fight for that every day I'm there. Thank you.
Time. Mr. Hilliard, you get to go first, and then Mr. Franklin. Thirty seconds. Give us your parting shot.
Wow. Let me say this. District Nine, I love you. My blood flows through District Nine. Everything you gave me, the opportunity to serve you as a voting poll chief when I was a young person, and I worked my way up from the voting poll chief to, to, to being on the State Executive Democratic Committee. I'm a proven leader. And in proven leadership, you know the things that I've done. And I want to ask you to give me the opportunity to complete the job and bring my experience that you've invested in me back to the Birmingham City Council. Thank you so much. John Hilliard, August of twenty-sixth.
Mr. Franklin?
On August twenty-sixth, you have a decision to make. Do you wanna keep what you have? You wanna go back? Or you wanna vote for somebody that's tired to City Hall? I bring a fresh face, new ideas, bringing us together. To me, it's very simple.
Fifteen seconds.
I'm saying things that we've always said we wanted. If you want something different, and you feel we deserve better, give me that opportunity to work with you and work together. It's not just about me, it's about us. On August twenty-sixth, vote Richard E. Franklin Jr. for your next Birmingham city councillor for District Nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we give it up for these candidates? Thank you all for attending. That concludes our, uh, forum for city council, District Nine. Vote August twenty-sixth. Polls open at seven and close at seven. We will now regroup. And again, there are, uh, there are refreshments in the festival, you may take and partake in all of that.